Park City Council Order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Victoria.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Next item on our agenda is council comments, if any of my colleagues have any comments. Councilmember Robinson.
I'll say that I was at the street festival on Sunday, great turnout, great day and all. Saw a lot of dogs there, which brings dog parks back to life, and so I moved my gaze over to the city manager who has told me earlier as she was sick and she's thinking about it, I'll leave it at that. The other thing is that I've had some complaints about Carroll Avenue, particularly the speeding and lack of pedestrian safety elements between the junction and Sligo Creek Parkway. And I know that if I'm going to get involved in that, and I am, I have to put my Don Quijote hat on, so I'm looking for Sancho Panza amongst my colleagues and staff to go fight the great battle with the state highway administration one more time, I'll fill you in as it goes.
Other comments? Councilmember Wright?
I also had a good time at the street festivals, huge amazing festival, and big thanks to Roz Grigsby and all the volunteers that made that happen, I see one of them here, John, and it was, just seemed larger than it's been in the past, which is great how, how many things there were and how far it stretched. I had a couple items, one is I think that I wanted to talk a little bit or mention some thoughts on the public works facility, I know we've, that's on our agenda for the future, we've talked about renovating and spending money for that, I think we really need to take, relook at that. I have concern in this climate about spending all of that money, so I think we should slow down a little bit, we should reassess and think about how that cost affects the overall cost structure for providing those services, and reassess, looking at whether some of those services should go to the county versus us continuing to do them strictly on a cost, service provision basis. I'm not saying we should absolutely give it back to the county, but I think it needs to be relooked at and the numbers need to be rerun. Probably as part of that, we have to answer a question I've asked about before, which is, has to do with our roads. The last I, we talked about this, the city attorney was going to look into whether we could actually give our roads back to the county to maintain, and there's a number of functions that run out of the public works facility, maybe we don't give back all of them, but if we're thinking about redoing it and expanding it, you know, does it make sense for us to be doing all of the functions and maybe we can save money, maybe we don't need to do all the expansion if we were to give some of those functions back? So I think we, requires us to sharpen our pencils and relook at that before we commit the latest estimate is around $3 million for that. Connected to that is the, is the tax issue, the ongoing unfair tax situation we have with the county, and I was sort of curious from the city manager if we've had any progress. I know the county executive had this task, the task force, and the city manager has participated in it and been a great trooper and done some great work on that task force, but we sort of haven't heard anything about it for a while, it's kind of sitting with the county, and I'm wondering, I know this is tight budget times, but it's not an excuse for the county to ignore the task force, so I wonder if there's any sort of update, do we have any, is it still sitting with the county staff or?
No, we got an updated report, which I just happened to have with me this evening. The municipal reps are basically taking one last look at that, I think the goal is to try to complete that yet this fall, obviously everyone's been a little tied up with dealing with their own individual budget problems.
Yeah.
But it should be finished fairly soon.
And I think if we can't get some fair resolution, at least as our wise mayor has said, they don't need to commit to it all this year, but if we can re-agree to the formulas and figure out a path to getting there, that's one thing, if we just get nothing, then I think we have to look at other aggressive approaches. And the last issues I want to just comment on are the, some environmental issues, I'm curious, I've asked a number of times about this, about where we are in terms of our purchase of wind power, so I was curious if the city manager had any update related to that.
Yes, I do, we had been waiting to get sort of an update on the contractual issues, obviously there were a number of entities, including the city of Tacoma Park as well as Montgomery College, that were wanting to move to 100% wind power, so they were trying to work through whether or not they could get that additional power through the vendors who had submitted bids or needed to solicit other bids. The information we got today from the county executive office is that we hope that that issue will be resolved by week's end.
Okay, great. Resolved, meaning that we will be able to buy 100% of this?
Yes.
And do we, do we have any sense of the cost on that, is it going to end up costing in the ballpark of what we thought it was in terms of additional costs, or is it going to be less, do we have any sense of that yet?
No, I don't.
Okay, be good to know that. But I think if, if it does end up costing us a lot, we should relook at whether we want to buy wind power or whether we'd be okay with buying non-nuclear renewable, because there's other options besides just wind power. In this area anyway, you're not really buying wind power, you're buying energy and then a set of renewable credits with it, so. The three more environmental issues, this environmental night a little bit for me, is we've talked a little bit before about streetlights, and in particular this bill that the state passed where we could own the streetlights over time and would have an incentive to put more efficient streetlights in. I know Daryl was going to look at that, it's something council member Robinson I think was also interested in, and I was wondering if we have any sense of when Daryl might get a chance to look at that or come back to us with that information.
I know I had had some communication with one of the council members about this issue, probably in the last six months or so, I think it's a fairly complicated matter, so I don't think that's something that staff would be able to do on its own, I think if a majority of the council wants to look at this, we will probably need some technical assistance. So if there's a majority that would like to look at that, probably look to the mayor to schedule that, but that's not something we'll be able to do in-house.
So obviously the council probably can't decide that tonight, but then, then I would look to have that come to a vote with some information where we can make a decision about it soon. And then two relatively small policy items, I was just thinking about how the parking permits, we give a half-price parking permit to anyone who has a hybrid vehicle, and having thought about how the hybrid vehicle market has evolved and how fuel efficiency has evolved in general, I think we should actually change that rule and just go to a mile per gallon rule, so any car over a certain threshold, we might put it at 40 miles to the gallon, because you could drive a Honda Fit, which isn't a, or a Toyota Corolla, which isn't a hybrid vehicle, and then you could drive a hybrid Escalade, and the person with a hybrid Escalade is getting the half-price permit, and the person who's driving the much more fuel-efficient Honda Fit or Toyota Corolla isn't, so I think we should, it's a pretty simple change, won't cost us anything, maybe if more people take advantage of it, and I know it's not going to drive someone to buy the vehicle specifically, but it's another thing to encourage people. Maybe we could even think about giving those people free permits, as opposed to just half-price permits.
The biggest challenge, I see council member Wright, is just the ease of administration. What would we be looking for, would staff be researching for each vehicle that is submitted?
I think it'd be pretty, I thought, I thought about this, yes, I think it's pretty easy, because now I assume someone just brings in their registration with the hybrid vehicle, you know, it's designated as a hybrid vehicle. The APA now has a very easy website where you can go on and print out your exact vehicle, and it shows all the miles per gallon to it, and they could just bring that printout in, or, you know, it would take the clerk about a minute to look up, or less, not the city clerk, but whoever's doing the permits, less than a minute to look up and say, okay, is this registration in front of me, meet whatever mile per gallon threshold we set. And then the last idea is that, some discussion about the use of polystyrene, styrofoam at the, by the street festival vendors, I know this is something that's been talked about a little bit before, there's a group of kids who are trying to get the county to stop using polystyrene in the, in the schools, I don't see why there's any reason the city couldn't ban that as a substance used in restaurants and vendors within the city limits, so I'd be interested in figuring out a way to make that happen.
You know, I've mentioned that before.
I knew, so I said some else to mention, it's on.
When I lived in Santa Cruz, they banned styrofoam, no styrofoam coolers, hey, that was great, it's a bland ban, plastic bags.
So that's my long diatribe for the evening.
We'll hold you to it. Did you have one more comment, Councilmember Robinson?
You got me going there, Josh, with the environmental issues, I have a couple of small points, I believe it's October 20th, the Council of Government, Climate, Energy and Environmental Policy Committee is sponsoring a streetlight forum with vendors, I'll make sure that's the date and get, get back to you so that we can have some representative there to see what they have to say. I know that Mike Tabor brought up the banning, or the cleaning up the non-recyclables with Roz Grigsby at the street festival on Sunday, and she's going to look into it in her copious free time now that the festival is over, and start a conversation with the vendors, although these vendors are, are professional vendors and may be hard to convince, but that's on the table, so there's forward motion there. I'm certainly in favor of banning, if we can, plastic bags in our local stores. One other way, which I'd love to get some feedback on, is imposing an energy tax directly on Tepco bills in our city limits. I had a conversation at one point and with someone from the county who seemed to think that that was a possibility, so that we could have a carbon, in essence, a carbon tax, tax the things we don't want, this energy use in our city, so I'd appreciate if staff, if we could look, look into that a little bit, carbon tax. And the last thing is, there's a group called the Green Guild working out of Riverdale Park, they're a biodiesel cooperative, there's three ways to deal with biodiesel fuels, one is to acquire it and spray it into your regular diesel fuel in the winter time so that you achieve a 20% mix of biodiesel to regular diesel, that's necessary in the winter. The next kind of level up is to actually pump biodiesel, acquire it and pump it into cars, and the final kind of level is to, is to brew it or make the biodiesel itself, which is to take vegetable oil, which is readily available, take out the, what is it, the, can't remember, the impurities and so forth, and then you get biodiesel. And I brought this up with Daryl Braithwaite, our public works managed director, and she said that space is tight at the public works facility, but I would appreciate a look at that, at the facility, there was some talk about putting such a, such an installation in a, in a local school, but then zoning became an issue, it may be that we can do the spray or the pumping into our own vehicles, we use a lot of vehicles, diesel vehicles in town, it would be nice if the cooperative could continue on by having the filling station, which I think can be a mobile filling station, so doesn't have to be, it can be semi-permanent or not even, have that available to people who are in the cooperative, the biodiesel cooperative, it would certainly be something green for our city, and it doesn't sound like it would be an investment at all, I think they can handle their own, getting it set up under their own steam, as it were, so we can talk more about that too. Thanks for putting up with my continued comments.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, I really appreciate the suggestions from my esteemed colleagues on how we can, different initiatives we could do in Tacoma Park to improve the environment, but I think with the environmental task force just being formed and starting its work, that maybe we're getting the cart before the horse, and should, should let them come back with their recommendations to the council, so that we can focus our great energy on a few of the tasks and make sure that they actually get implemented. Thank you.
I'll get back to you in a second. I was going to make a similar point, because I had one environmental initiative that I've been working on and hoping to take that information to the task force as a, as a possible path for us, so I won't go into detail, but I'll just say that it's conversion of our garbage into diesel and electricity as a pilot project for a new technology, and the vendor is interested in partnering with us, and the public works director is going to be meeting with that vendor on Wednesday, so we'll have some more information. I did also want to just say on one other item that isn't in the current theme of environmental and on that bandwagon, that I thought we had a, that staff conducted a very successful tour of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, and this was a tour on Friday for a number of officials representing county council members, state representatives, state agencies, federal government, federal agencies, and I thought it was very instructive for the four members of the council who went along to see how far the, the city has gone in working to come up with some new initiatives and some, some great new programs and working with the businesses in the, in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. This was the, I think it was the official unveiling of the website and the logo and everything else, and so anybody who hasn't seen it, thenewav.com is an excellent website that, excuse me, that the city's put together, and I would, I would say that, in my opinion, that, that type of website, that design of a website is, is much better than the city's current overall website, and I think that's a direction that we need to be moving. And I just wanted to commend staff in the Housing and Community Development Department, our planning staff, for putting that, that tour together, it was excellent. Councilmember Wright, you had one more comment?
Two quick comments, just one, I did think about that when I proposed those items, Terry, and I thought the parking permit and the polystyrene were not items that would take up big resources by the city, and so I thought we didn't need to wait for the, the task force, the environment. I just also wanted to comment on, I thought the tour was great on Friday, and the staff did an amazing job, and was glad to be there with the mayor, I know that was one of the rare times they take time out of the middle of the day to do something for the city, and I know that's a constant thing that Bruce is doing multiple times a week as our mayor, so I thank him for all those extracurricular activities he does for us.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is additional agenda items, there are none, and scheduling updates, I have none, so the next item is public comment period, and that's a chance for anybody to make any comments they'd like to make on anything except our voting session items, and if you can please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes, we appreciate it.
My name is Patty Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4. Wanted to tell everybody out there how great the street festival was, the weather was nice, great, there was good food and good people, and everybody knows that I brought the symbol of what Tacoma Park stands for, I was out there with the big P symbol, you know, and everybody was glad to see it, and everybody was, everybody was happy having a good time, I'm glad to see that, there was no trouble or anything. And another thing too is, somebody was asking the, if the city council could somehow or other put a notice in the schools to see if we can get some kids interested in learning how our government works, and maybe even put in a word here and there, or what they'd like to see done, you know, and, because it would be nice to see the kids taking part in what we're doing, you know, and becoming active, and I'm pretty sure that they, the kids would absolutely love it, a lot of children would love it, because, you know, it's better to see them coming over here and learning how our government works, maybe even participating, to see them out there participating in some gang somewhere, you know, I think we've got to do everything we can to, to give our kids a sense of belonging and a sense of, a sense of self-worth, in a sense that they're accomplishing something, otherwise they're going to go to the wrong side of the fence to get that same feeling, and it isn't going to be anyway, because living, living in the gangs and going out there using drugs and drinking, that's just a sham, there's no life involved in it at all, and they could use the same time to, to become active, to, you know, to train their, our minds, and to become something good. And also, as far as the city, you know, trying to get a revenue and stuff, you know, I was wondering, could Tacoma Park, if they wanted to, put their own cigarette tax out, you know, like a tumor tax, you know, make it, make, make them have to pay to get their cancer, you know, because I used to smoke three packs a day, and I quit almost four years ago, before years ago in December, and I haven't felt, I don't miss them at all, I don't miss cigarettes at all, and I would be wondering, you know, it'd be great if, you know, the city could put, gain a tax that way, and they could put it towards, you know, healthcare in our city, maybe toward our schools, educate our kids about drugs and stuff, because, you know, nicotine is a drug, and we could educate our kids on that, but the, I saw a lot of kids who wanted to be like me when they grow up, they kept telling me that yesterday, you know, they wanted to be like me, and I just wanted to let them know that to be like me, you've got to be interested in peace, interested in the world around you, not to carry guns or use violence or participate in any gangs, just do what your, what your heart tells you to do, and participate in the world around you. Thanks for letting me share. Remember, Tacoma Park rules, and don't forget, 29 more days before we vote, and I want to see everybody in Ward 4 out voting, you know, if you can get out there and vote, do it, that's part of being an adult, part of being an activist, get out and vote, 29 more days, all right?
Thanks, Mr. Lovelace, I'll just take the opportunity to respond to a couple of your points, they, they were good ones about the city working with the schools, it reminded me that I believe it's day after tomorrow, Wednesday, the 7th, is Walk to School Day, and a number of folks from the city will be down at the parking lot at the Franklin at about 8:30, and the step off to go to school at Piney Branch Elementary is at 9:05, and a number of us will be walking to school.
What's the date again?
This Wednesday, October 7th.
Thank you.
And also, November just happens to be Municipal Government Week, but it's in the month, Municipal Government Month? Municipal Government Month, the month of November, and during the month of November, a number of people, officials from the city, myself included, I know the police chief always goes, a number of people go to the schools and talk to classes of kids about what our jobs are, what we do about city government, and various activities during that month, so we, we do go into the schools and talk to them. And then just finally, on your point about a possible cigarette tax, what I'd point out is that the city has to have authority from the state to impose any kinds of taxes, and that's one of the things that the municipalities and the state are trying to get the attention of the state government on, is the ability to have other ways to raise money, revenues besides property tax and income tax, and so there are ongoing efforts in that area, but without that authority municipalities can do nothing. Anybody else who'd like to comment?
Hello, my name is Terrell North, I'm a resident of Ward 5 at 610 Kennebec, apartment 104, and first I want to say I agree with everything that Mr. Lovelace said, I'm so glad that he is here, and maybe when I grow up I can be like you too. Last week, during the, the presentation of the Public Safety Committee's Advisory Committee's report, I made a statement that has led to six or seven different conversations with people around the city about gangs in the city of Tacoma Park, and without going into too much detail about that, I wanted to step up today to say three things. First, I grew up in a community infested with gangs, so when I say gang member, I don't mean someone who's a threat to you, I mean someone who is a member of this society the same way that each and every single one of us is, and in my experience, most gang members are young people in need of direction, they're part of this community, not a threat to it. However, one of the things that I also said was, in, in, in talking about the situation, I said that there are, are gang members who operate out of different parts of the city, and when I said operate, I did not mean to say that there were gangs who ran any part of the city, whether it's the rec center or anything like that, that's definitely not true. What I was saying is that there's a presence of gang members in every single part of this city, there's a presence of gang members about a block away from here, as you can see when you drive in, there's a presence of gang members that are rec center, there are gang members wherever they're human beings, because gang members are human beings. So I wasn't trying to say that the police department isn't doing its job, or that the rec department isn't doing its job, I'm saying that we, and this is the third thing, and I'll sit down, we as a city know that we can do more, because as a city, you know, we passed a resolution to say we want to impeach President Bush, President Bush doesn't live here, he's not going to come through here, but we did something because people cared. As a city, we've banned nuclear weapons, I don't know anyone who's died of a nuclear attack in this town, but we did something about it because we cared, and the same way that we care about nuclear weapons, trading with rogue states like Burma, getting involved in the schools, in the, in the county school redistricting, we care and we act, so there's more that we can do, and I'm saying that there's more that we as a city at Tacoma Park can do. So before my time runs out, I want to commend, I want to ask each of you, we'll let you know that this Saturday, October 10th, Mixed Unity will be holding a peace summit in Montgomery College, right here in Tacoma Park, and I think all of you would benefit, especially each of you as city council members, would benefit by participating in this upcoming summit, and I've been working with my own council member, Ruben, Ruben Sniffer, to try to see if there's a way to get the members of Mixed Unity, who are a teenage group formed in, after the death of Thailand, see if there's a way to get the members that are from the city of Tacoma to meet with, at least Mr. Sniffer, if not each and every one of you, to see if there's a way to move forward as a city, because there's a Tacoma Park solution to the gang problem, and I know it's there, so, and I know, and if you can do all the other things you do, I know you can do this too, thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. North. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment?
Good evening, my name is John Hume, I live on Carroll Avenue in Ward 3, and recently my firm, the Sligo Creek Tile Company, completed the original art tile installation entitled Tales of Mystery and Imagination, which now resides in, in B.Y. Morrison Park at Tacoma Junction, and I'm here tonight to say thank you, thank you very much, to the entire city of Tacoma Park, for following in the great tradition of the Roosevelt administration, which in hard economic times enlisted the services of, of our country's artistic community for the beautification and general repair and improvement of our nation's structures. I wish to specifically thank council, the office of the city manager, our hard-working Department of Public Works, the tireless Department of Housing and Community Development, the Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Commission, the incomparable Peter Tabory and his construction installation crew, our neighbors, friends and families also, for this historic opportunity. This is not an Academy Awards speech, so if I've forgotten anybody, it's a failure of my mind and, and, and not my heart, for my gratitude is profound for this. Thank you so much for your interest in the arts and for your continued support of handmade tiles, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. Anybody else who'd like to comment?
Hello, my name is Mickey McGuire, and I live on Carroll Avenue, where Manor Circle and Sherman Avenue come together, that people on Sherman Avenue can park in front of their house, and people on Manor Circle can park in front of their house, but you can't do that on Carroll Avenue, and I haven't looked into it, but I don't think I get a break on my taxes because I can't park in front of my house. There are four licensed drivers in my house, only one can use the driveway, so we're always looking for a place to park. On Manor Circle, when it comes down into Carroll Avenue, on the western curb, it's painted yellow, all the way back up to the driveway of the house. painted yellow, all the way back up to the driveway of the house on the western side. On the eastern side, it's painted the normal 12 or 15 feet back, and then it's clear, suggesting that you can park there. But further up, there's a sign saying, can't park beyond this point. But it's obscure in competition with the yellow paint. Now, there was a time when you could travel through Manor Circle and go south on Ethan Allen, but they closed that off with a flower garden. So there's not a lot of excess traffic on Manor Circle anymore, which would justify the lack of parking. I would like to suggest that you leave that paint as it is, but take that sign down so that we can use those three parking spaces that are available. That it won't interfere with the sightline on Carroll Avenue, because the houses do a pretty good job of that. You can't see east and west on Carroll until you get down on Manor Circle, close to that Carroll Avenue junction. So there was probably a time when it was justified to eliminate that parking. But I think that's gone now, and we do need the parking. So I'd like for you to look into that and see if you could justify removing that sign and leave it as it is. But if you don't, then we should paint that eastern curb all the way back up to the driveway of the house on eastern side to match the one on the western side. Because if you park there, it isn't always enforced, but sometimes when it's enforced, the ticket is 40 bucks. If you do it very often, it exceeds the value of my old Jeep. So I don't want to take a chance on parking there. But I would like to have that space open up, if you think that it's justified to do that. Hey, thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments.
Mr. McGuire, you're in my ward, and Mr. Tredo, Colin Tredo, has asked me to look into that very, those very same parking spaces. I have a little kind of a hand-drawn map. I'll make sure that they're the same ones we're talking about. And I did have the chief go out there last week. We looked at it together. He was not immediately in favor of opening up those spaces based on the width of the street. But I'm going to continue to work with Mr. Tredo on those spaces, and I'd like to get your contact information as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Good. Somebody's going to introduce the Boy Scouts.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann McDorman, and I have 10 Boy Scouts here from Troop 33. We meet every week at the church at the corner of Tulip and Maple, and they do a lot of good works in the community. And they're working on citizenship in the community merit badge. So they're here. And just because I'm at the mic, I wanted to comment on one thing. I understand that the city's lost some funding from the county. And I know that's of concern. And I know that the first thought is to raise taxes. And I just wanted to tell you that we are dying from property taxes in this city. There's been years of increases. I have an average home, and I'm paying nearly $10,000 a year in property taxes. If you go just a block from my house, where you're outside the city in the unincorporated part of Montgomery County, you're paying less than half of that in property taxes. We are dying. I liked council members' bright suggestions of looking at things that we can give back to the county, like road maintenance and stuff like that. But please, 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 don't tax us to death, because we can't do it. I can't do it anymore. I mean, I'm seriously looking at moving. And I'm a 20-year resident. I'm very active in the community, and it's just killing us.
Thanks for your comments, and I hope our first reaction is not to raise taxes. Anybody else who'd like to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move along to the next item, which is our first special session item.
Bruce.
Oh, sorry.
I think this gentleman here has something to say.
Oh, sure, sure.
Do you want to make a comment?
Hi, my name's Erin Richards. I live on 7404 Holly Avenue. And I would just like to say I support every move this Tacoma Park can take to go green. Thank you.
I think everybody in the room agrees with you. Now we'll move to the first special session item, which is a resolution to authorize Tacoma Park to file comments on Washington Adventist Hospital's petition to relocate pending before the Maryland Healthcare Commission and to request interested party status. And the city attorney, Sue Silver, is here, and she will explain, among other things, what interested party status is.
Sure. Very briefly, as all of you probably know, and many people hear, the Washington Adventist Hospital has submitted a application to be able to relocate its facility from Tacoma Park to White Oak, and that was filed on September 11th. So in 30 days, by October 11th, or because of the holiday, October 13th, any entity which is to complain or comment on that decision is supposed to submit comments to the Maryland Healthcare Commission. And this resolution would authorize Tacoma Park to submit comments and also to ask to become an interested party. And that means that we, as a party, would be able to participate in the proceedings, see all communications between the hospital and the commission, go to all meetings that they have with each other, comment on any changes to the application, make oral argument before the reviewer, who's going to make recommendations on this relocation, file exceptions to any proposed decision, have oral argument in front of the commission. In other words, fully participate, and then if the worst happens, we also would be able to file an appeal to the circuit court if we're unhappy with the proceedings, the conclusion of the commission.
And if they don't give us interested party status?
The alternative, and we recommend applying to that as a fallback, is something called participating entity. And earlier, about a year ago, we had worked with the commission to actually change its regulations to say that a municipality that is losing a hospital would be eligible to apply for participating entity status. The reason we're not recommending that is that it has really three major differences from interested party, which is the more full participation. First, you would not be able to appeal to court. Second, you would not be able to have oral arguments in front of the reviewer. And third, you would not be able to file any kind of exceptions to a proposed decision. So in short, your participation would be somewhat constricted compared to the full party status that an interested party receives.
And can you say a few words about the potential level of costs associated with either one? Or the difference, or just a sense of how the interested party status could or could not affect costs?
I think there would be a potential difference in costs on the things that I mentioned, the ability to file exceptions, the ability to have oral argument in front of the reviewer. And certainly, if we went to court, that would be a much more major undertaking. So there is a cost component to this. We currently have a contract, as you all know, with an expert, PDA Inc., whose main person we're working with is Nancy Lane. And her work is on an hourly basis. So there would be some increased cost if we participate in a more increased way.
But the potential for increased costs are pretty much in our control rather than driven by the particular status?
Exactly. I think we have a lot of choices at every stage in these proceedings, how much we're going to get involved. There's going to be a lot of other hospitals in the area who are going to be involved in this case, and we might take the position that we'll let them duke it out while we only add when we have a particular interest in mind. Briefly, let me just say what that is, as far as I understand it. And that is, we are mostly concerned about the access to healthcare for all of our constituents, especially those who are underinsured, uninsured, and dependent upon public transportation. The committee of citizens who looked into the move of the hospital said that they felt that the middle-class, wealthier people in our community will probably do fine with this move, but those who have any kind of economic constraints will have a great deal of difficulty. So we are working to ensure that there will be the right kind of access for those people. And one idea which we're working on is the idea of using the campus, if they move from here, to be a place where there will be access to primary and urgent care. And we would like very much that any move of the hospital to White Oak would be conditioned upon that becoming a reality.
Can you say a little bit about timeframe?
Yes, we have to file the comments by October 13th. There's then a whole regulatory timeframe, which will be several months. The whole process could take as long as a year or two years.
Okay. Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Yes.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Clay. Council discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Snipper?
Well, I think this is a great idea. I think we should move forward with it. I have a relatively minor wordsmithing thing. In the second whereas, it says to ensure that Tacoma Park residents maintain convenient access to quality healthcare. And I think convenient is not strong enough. I think we need something sufficient, adequate. I'm not exactly sure what stronger word would work there, but convenient is not really what we're talking about.
Timely?
Timely?
Well, I mean, that's part of the issue, is that people who have transportation difficulties, both in an urgent setting and in a day-to-day, it's not perfect either.
I kind of thought adequate was better than convenient, and is a little broader.
Yeah.
Any sense of, any other choices, or whether to go to one of those?
Adequate, yeah, adequate.
Okay.
Let's do adequate.
If there's no objection, we'll substitute adequate for convenient. Any other discussion? Did you have more comments? Anybody else? Is there any public comment on this resolution?
This is my first time to appear before the city council, and I'd just like to thank you for being willing to serve on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is second reading ordinance authorizing FY-10 budget amendment number one. And the city manager is going to walk us through that. There are pages of numbers and changes since the first reading, but hopefully she can make those very clear in very short order.
No pressure. I'll do my best. Obviously, this looks a lot different than it did on first reading. To clarify, everything that is highlighted in yellow were additions since first reading. If there's any strikeouts, of which I think there is only one, that is essentially redlined or struck through. As the council is aware and was included in the first reading of the budget amendment, the city, like all other municipalities in Maryland, took a hit with the state budget reductions. As you may recall, when we talked about this at first reading, we had a revenue reduction of about $577,000, with the majority of that coming from highway user revenues. Took a 90% hit in that revenue source, and also a fairly sizable reduction in our state police aid. I think certainly there needs to be considerably more community discussion about how we respond to that, but as an initial step. And these are really the easy ways of reducing your budgetary cost. Is what is included in the budget amendment is a recognition that the city was able to negotiate comparable health insurance for its employees at a reduced cost compared to what we had anticipated when the budget was adopted. As you may recall, we had anticipated an 11% increase in our health insurance cost. The quote that came in from our, at that time, carrier during FY-09, originally quoted almost 20%. By the time the negotiations were done, we were still down to 17, so we switched carriers. So a lot of the changes that you see under general fund expenditures is simply a recognition and a reduction in the various departmental fringe benefit accounts due to that switch in carrier. One of the other changes that staff has recommended is taking certain public safety expenditures that are eligible to be paid for out of the speed camera fund and shifting some of those costs to the speed camera fund. That includes the cost of one police officer who has been essentially working full-time on speed camera program management ever since the program's inception. So that seems to be an appropriate change to make. In discussions with the chief, we have also talked about providing a more focused approach to our traffic enforcement by creating a traffic officer position. That is a fairly common step that I've seen in the other communities in which I've worked. Many of the municipalities in Montgomery County have a traffic officer position. And I think one of the things you tend to see with speed cameras is people will slow down approaching the camera, but then accelerate once they're past that. So that's certainly a problem that many of the municipalities are attempting to address. Before the council went on recess, you had also approved a contract with Contract Video Services. And as you may recall, it was at the end of July, so it may not be at the top of your memory. We had anticipated that we would be expending more than was in the budget for some of our cable equipment. As I indicated to the council at that time, that we would be bringing forward that change in a budget amendment. I would note that the money that is expended on cable enhancement is essentially money that we get through the cable franchises. It is not coming from the city's general operating revenues or tax dollars. It comes strictly from cable franchise fees, and it can only be used for very restricted purposes. Relative to the speed camera fund, as I mentioned, what is proposed in the second reading of this budget amendment is shifting certainly, certain general fund expenditures to the speed camera fund. There are also some other changes, though, relative to the speed camera fund I just wanted to highlight for the council. As you may recall, when we were doing your budget deliberations, the city literally had only been in the speed camera business for several days at the time I gave you my proposed budget, and we had not even received any paid citation data by the time you all had approved the budget for FY-10. We had assumed that we would have 7,500 paid citations a month. In actuality, we are seeing fewer paid citations on a monthly basis than that. Additionally, the state legislature made a change when they expanded the speed camera program across the state of Maryland. Montgomery County was essentially a pilot project. The change that went into effect on October 1st raised the miles per hour that a driver had to be going in order for it to constitute a violation under the speed camera program. Working with our vendor, he anticipated that we may see a 25% reduction in the number of citations that are actually issued because of that change in state law. So the amendment that is before you this evening would reduce speed camera revenues by about $797,000. It's a function of those two items that we just talked about. Speed camera fund expenditures would decrease by about $55,000, even with the shift from the general fund. Because of the reduced number of citations, that means the payment to the contractor would similarly be decreased. There are other expenditures in the speed camera fund I just wanted to highlight for the council beyond the personnel costs that we've talked about. The police department has identified certain equipment that they would like to purchase out of the speed camera fund. I highlighted one or two items in the blue cover sheet. One is a program called eCitation, which would allow the officers to electronically write speed citation. It would essentially reduce our paper flow by probably about 70%, is what they're estimating. And the department would also like to update some of its LiDAR equipment. LiDAR is essentially the laser equivalent of the old radar gun. If you remember what those are like. And then the last item would simply be to incorporate an operating transfer of $7,500 from the general fund to the community center fund. As the council is aware, we were wrapping up some of our Phase 1 and Phase 2 issues. Yet this fiscal year, all the revenues that were budgeted in the community center fund this year was related to the auditorium renovation. As you may recall, that renovation is being paid for with a combination of state, federal grants, as well as a contribution from Washington Adventist Hospital. None of those monies can be None of those monies can be used to pay the legal expenses that we incurred in terms of wrapping up those settlement agreements with the contracts for Phase 1 and Phase 2. Hopefully, that's not as clear as mud.
Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Move.
Right here, second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper? Seconded by Councilmember Wright. Discussion, Councilmember Snapper?
I have a relatively quick question. Do you have a kind of total for this? What's the total change in revenues and expenditures?
Across the, no, I think under the fiscal year exception, it is highlighted by funds, but not a combination of funds.
Right. That's what I was wondering, if you have a total.
We don't typically per Senate like that, Councilmember Snapper, just because some of the funds are restricted.
Right. Yeah, that's true. They're restricted. Good point.
Councilmember, I thought, Councilmember Wright? Did you have your hand up? Okay, then it must have been Councilmember Siemens in the council.
It concerns me that the changes to this have been so many changes since first reading that well over 50% of the, of the many pages here are highlighted because there are changes. And I think it would be fair to the community to give one extra week before voting on the second, second reading, so the community has an opportunity to respond to these, these many changes.
There's no urgency, I guess what I would comment is, when the council had first reading on July 27th, we had just heard, I think within the week before that, about what was happening at the, in September. That was about a week after we had heard from the state about their reductions. So, we wanted to go ahead and recognize that change.
And I'm not criticizing the fact that we have so many changes. I think it's understandable, but I think it's fair to the community to give them a chance to comment on this. So, I would, I would move that we table this for a week.
Second. Okay, and move table, second. All those in favor of moving to lay this on the table and bring it back next week, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, plus one. So, we will bring this back next week. And anybody who would like a chance to take a look at that?
Can I make my comment anyway?
Sure.
I just want to make a comment because I couldn't get this all to come up today when I was trying to read it online. And for paper purposes, I've asked the city not to make me a packet anymore. But I didn't see the thing about the LiDAR in the, because I was able to read the front page, but in using speed camera money to pay for that. My preference on the speed camera money is to use it, like, I understand using it for the ticket writing, because it will help make us more efficient, which in the long run will allow us to use more of the speed camera money for ultimately sidewalks. Is, I'm more interested in sidewalks than, with speed camera money than I am in the, in the LiDAR. But, I guess, so I guess I'd like to know more about it. You don't have to tell me now, but since we have another week.
Sure. If I could, just so you can just kind of have food for thought till next week. The items that would be considered, other than the staff items we talked about, that would be kind of public safety program oriented, there's $100,000 here. If you notice at the, at your leisure, at the very back of the item, it will show you kind of the fund balance that is likely to remain at the end of this year. One of the things that we need to continue to analyze is the other part of the change in state law. Basically states that you have to take your speed camera revenues as a percentage of all, all fund revenues, regardless of whether it's coming from grants or whatever.
I don't know.
And basically, if it exceeds 10%, that money then needs to be remitted to the state. Any monies that are carried over from one fiscal year to the next essentially counts towards those revenues for FY-10, so there certainly is a impetus, if you will, for cities not to be carrying large fund balances. One of the things that we need to continue to analyze is, besides that change in state law, with the state essentially decimating certain general fund revenue sources, what it means mathematically is the percentage of speed camera revenues as a percentage of overall city revenues is now increasing. I had run some calculations when we adopted the budget. It didn't look like we would be having to remit any speed camera funds to the state. I'm not sure that will still be the case with the hits we took in highway user revenues and state police aid. So, I would just add that, that there is some incentive to try and to be spending money down. At the end of this month, we are scheduled to bring forward some recommendations regarding sidewalks. Obviously, there's survey work and design work that may still need to be done, which may take some time. We're trying to prioritize the streets and to give you all a package that you can consider.
So, it sounds like any analysis that you can provide us that would help us understand that relationship, that term, would be helpful in general for understanding how best to use those funds and not lose them.
Sure. Do that.
Okay, then we will move to the next item, which is our consent agenda. And that has four resolutions on it, and all of those are appointing members to task forces or commissions. Would you like to move it?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Wright. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously as well. What we will do is, we're going to take a little bit of an early break this evening, because the next item, when we come back, is going to be a discussion of the, and a presentation about the community center lobby design. This is a piece that we held out of, it was an. And maybe if you want to just kind of, just say in a couple sentences what we did out there.
Sure. What we did was looked at the lobby and the impact of the changes of the auditorium wall to the lobby, and some identification of where a new desk is proposed for a kind of welcoming desk.
Oh, that coming.
So, the architects that we have from iStudio who are working on the auditorium, Chris French and Rick Schneider, put some black tape on the floor to show where a new reception desk might go. There's a couple of decision points or areas that we'd like to have you comment on. Staff has been working with architects on the functionality of the desk for some time. And we feel pretty good that we've got the things we need to do, recreation staffing, kind of general administration staffing, passport staffing, and being a welcoming presence by being, having a desk that's a little bit lower and that kind of thing. We do have some need for input on some design elements that staff has differences of opinion on, and we kind of want to make sure that we have a sense of the council as we move forward, so we can give some direction to the architects who need to make the design changes finalized into a change order, so that we can get the work done while the contractors are here for the auditorium. The, we do have the funds for the work in the lobby as part of the auditorium project, given the low amount that the bids came in for the auditorium project. Nevertheless, we can't waste a lot of time on that. One of the biggest issues that staff had had to do with, with the idea of decorian drape look, which in the pictures looks taller than it really is. If you think about how tall the countertops are, they're not that tall. Some people really don't like the design, some people really like it. And it got to be a point where it's a little different, and we wanted to have your sense about, is that a neat artistic element? Is it something you don't, is it too risky? Is it something that feels welcoming? Is it something that should be a little different? And that's one element that we wanted to talk about. The other has to do with a little bit about the design of the, that shows up on the acoustic panels and that kind of thing. This is kind of your input, so that architects can, can come up with a final design.
I want to ask a question first about the, the drape. If we didn't do the drape, is there a place where the stuff that now clutters the top of the desk would go in, in the alternative design?
Magazine racks have been mentioned.
We didn't find an integrated way to solve that. I think it's the best way to answer that.
You basically end up putting them back on top of the desk in the current, the way they are now.
Or in a magazine rack somewhere, somewhere else located in a lobby.
Free-standing or attached to the wall.
Something like that, yeah.
And to be fair, it was, integrating it into the design was something we were, we were tasked with early on.
We were trying to find a way to deal with the fact that we do have all these papers, and we're trying to make something that looks organized and welcoming, and yet have the materials at hand.
Right.
And do we have a sense that the area that would be available with that drape design would be adequate, or we'd still end up with free-floating or hanging magazine racks?
Well, you know, the papers are never ending. I mean, there's a certain amount that we have to control. But there are some things that, that are very much city announcements and things that we do feel really need to be, you know, displayed at the desk if there's some event coming up. There's sometimes new passport news, that kind of thing.
So, it tends to be city-provided information?
Yes. We have tried to make sure that, and like the rec guide and that kind of thing, the information that people just want to say about something happening in their neighborhood or whatever, we direct to the bulletin board that's for just public use.
Okay, okay, thanks. Councilmember Snapper, and then Councilmember Robinson, and then Councilmember Clay.
Well, let's start with the one you just, go backwards, the one you just indicated. I prefer a separate rack, because if you had a separate rack, then you could label the, I call them bins, if you will, so that people knew what they were. When you come up to the desk now, you have to peruse down it kind of each time, really. There's no set place for a particular item, they're just down there, so you have folks looking around all the time. So, I actually prefer a separate standalone rack, and also separate from where the desk is, so that people don't kind of congregate there and, you know, ask questions when they could read the handout.
And somewhere else.
Yeah, they could take the handout and read it. So, I think a rack elsewhere. The drape idea I thought was new and different, but I'm not wildly enthusiastic about it. I have the feeling that it wouldn't wear well, that it would look new and interesting for the first few times you went in, and then it would kind of just look odd. Perhaps I'm reacting, I'll just in full disclosure mode here, perhaps I'm reacting to the architectural design of the stuff in Erie and Flower, where I live. That was designed by a well-known architect, Tacoma Park, very unusual, the facing and with all kinds of odd angles. It does get comments, most of them, however, are negative. And it was one of those things that was interesting the first few times you saw it, and then it drives you nuts afterwards. So, I have the feeling, perhaps I'm overreacting, but that this would have that same quality, quality to it.
Councilmember Robinson?
Contrariwise, I like the, I like the corian elements, and I assume there'd be a little ridge, a ridge going along that would be.
It would be something to hold the papers, like a clear plastic thing to hold the papers.
I think that it's good to offer people something right there when they walk up, and it would be convenient, and then the folks behind the counter could kind of manage the paper and deal with it. I'd like, even like to see it on the other, maybe on the other side, too, the one on the way to the library, so that if there's one type of document that can go there and another type of document, and so forth.
Yeah, if I might just clarify, on the one that's on the end, the, that's also on the top, kind of near the wall, is where we will have a reader for the folks who come in to use the game room and whatever, they, they kind of swipe their ID card. So, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of foot traffic going on at that location.
And the background, the sound-absorbed background, that made a lot of sense to have, have that back there. It does seem really tinny, and it'd be nice to cut some of the, the sound blasting around from all the game rooms and stuff. And there's, there aren't a lot of soft spaces going down that hallway, so I think the sound-absorbed element is really a good idea. Of the two designs that you showed us, I'm kind of with Ruben and go with something simple. If there's going to be a design back there, something simple and almost abstract, the way you have the azaleas over the pool or the creek.
If I might, there's a couple different options, and we didn't really discuss this out there. One, the first idea that was brought was, was kind of a pattern of azaleas, because where azalea's sitting. Then there was a kind of a sense of, you know, was that more like wallpaper as opposed to a design, something that can look like it's flowing, so then there was the idea of a creek. There's, there are some artists in town who would love to provide, you know, some kind of either a good photograph or, or artwork that shows that might go there. We've not, we've not made any decision or direction on that.
And as soon as I said, oh, I like this one better, I was reminded of the time when I said the council should not be in charge of choosing artwork for the city. That should be in the, in the Arts and Humanities Council, or somebody else ought to pick it. Anyway, I like the idea of the sound-absorbed materials there, and I like the corian.
Councilmember Clay, and then Councilmember Siemens.
Thanks for providing all of the different viewpoints. It really helps a lot to be able to look at it from different angles. First of all, I think it's great to move the desk from where it's at to the new location, and it makes complete sense for security and safety reasons in, in particular, as well as the, as well as the customer service reasons. So, I like that. I like having it jut out a little bit, so that you can see down towards the library. I'm not actually sure you're, that you're even going to be able to see enough, but I don't have a good enough, like, you really are going to have to, like, you know, lean out and around. It would be nice.
One of the options is to, and we discussed it a little bit, was to basically cut the counter a little narrower there, so it's a little easier to see it there.
Sure. Yeah, I think anything that you could do, so that you didn't have to crane your neck as much, would be better for the, for safety reasons, so that it'd be, when you're sitting at, if you're sitting at the desk and that's where the main person's going to sit, it would be in your line of sight. I don't see a chair in front of that slot, though, so. You don't intend it to be the seating spot?
Well, I think that, you mean, for a staff person?
Yeah.
Actually, the person who's, there would probably be a person very close to that end that would kind of, because that's where you're going to be, want to watch, you know, you're going to be looking that way, you're going to be helping people as they check into the game room or whatever.
I would agree, and I think that you should, I don't know if you need to have a computer terminal there or not, but I think it would make sense to.
It's close visor.
To, to have it configured, so that somebody actually sat there as their seating spot, because I think in the end, that's how it's going to be utilized, and you might as well plant work from the start. So, I like that part. Continuing on with the desk configuration, I'm not really all that excited about losing a set of double doors. I don't think that's a good idea. Just watching the way that, and I've actually thought about this, as I've watched people use the space when we've had larger events. And in smaller events, and actually during the day, it's not that big of a deal, but when we've had larger events, it's been nice. I'm sure you're familiar with the William White study, where they monitored people on the street, and everybody stood dead center in, in the trap, in the lane of traffic to make their communications. And that is, in fact, I have observed that. That's what people do here, they stand right in front of the doorway. If we only have one set of doorways, it's going to be fairly clogged. And I've watched it here when we have large events, and it trades off, so they'll be in front of one doorway, and people will go around, and then it'll have a little gathering in the other one, and sometimes they both get clogged. a little gathering in the other one and sometimes they both get clogged. But I don't think I would support giving up the double doorways. And if it's about, I don't know how much passport business we do, but I guess it would beg the question then, do we have to do the passport business right here?
Right.
We have two desks upstairs, one in front of the finance area, which I don't think is used that much.
Whether or not passports are done here, we do need to have a place where somebody can, in a wheelchair, be it or otherwise is, is walking with a cane, has a place to sit and actually fill out papers or do whatever. And so one of the things that we really don't have now that we do need to accommodate is that. I do appreciate though, your comments, the, the change on the doors is, I think, the biggest issue with that.
Yeah, I don't want to give up the doorway. So I, I don't know how to, how to address that, but I really don't want to give up the doorway. While we stay on the desk, I like the scouts we're here, we're talking about bamboo. It has a kind of bamboo-y look now, but I'm not, I'm not crazy about the drape. I like corian too, but I don't think, I'm not sure it's going to be really well, well-received in Tacoma Park. I don't, I don't think they're going to like the, the more modernistic elements of the design personally. That's, that's what I personally think.
Unless it's purple.
Unless it's what?
Okay.
No.
Sorry. I love the idea of the, of the backdrop that you have and I, whether it's the creek photo or, or another of the historic photos, I'm not really crazy about just the flat azaleas picture. I really like weaving the elements of the Tacoma Park history into the pieces that you do. I think that's really terrific. And, but I don't think it matches really well then with your, with your more modernized look that you have either. So if you could find something else for that. I would prefer the magazine racks and you know what I'd really like. I love the, I love the playbill on the side of the auditorium here with the things that are posted here. It would be great, I don't know if the city has a printer of this scale or not, but it would be great if, when the city has stuff for like the senior group or the recreation department or, or communications has, or housing and community development has the new AV photo, you could have a parallel to this that's along this wall over here where your, gaziantine, where your movable casual seating arrangement is. So that instead of having to have, you know, I know a lot of people look at the flyer and some take them, but that would be really terrific and I think would be a great reflection of the city, a way to market the things that we do to the people, gaziantine, who come through.
Too close to me, huh?
And to find a way to, to rack the other stuff. I, I don't feel, I don't feel a compelling need to provide space for every advertiser that wants to stick stuff on our rec desk. We have two bulletin boards at the end down by where the more casual doors are over here. I wouldn't object to having more of them in the, maybe in the library or on this other side over here or in between these double doors over here. So people, as they came into each entrance, could get that kind of kiosk sense, but it'd be great if we could push it out to the edges of the building so it didn't, it gets sometimes, I think, really sloppy looking. I also like the casual seating. I was kind of sad, we had a little bit of seating out there for a while in this area here and then it disappeared, but it was really hard surface, I think from the IKEA Business Center. I love IKEA, but not the, not the hard feel. So it would be great to get, the kids are going to use these two of those, it has to be durable. But it'd be great to have someplace soft to sit down there. I turn 45 this month and, you know, I'm looking for softer chairs as I get older. So I think that was all of my thoughts, but I have to tell you, I feel really strongly about not giving up the double doorway. I think that was it.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you. I'll, I like to hire designers to design, so I'll try to limit my comments and questions to functionality. And I have probably eight questions, so I don't need big, long answers. But I just wanted to, I know that, you know, the people who actually use the desk may have some good opinions. Have you interviewed the, the actual staff members who are doing it, not just the managers?
They haven't, but I, I will say that we've worked really closely with the staff and they've come up with most of the suggestions and we just went ahead and just gave them directly there. So.
Okay, I appreciate that. I agree with Councilmember Clay that that hallway from the lobby down to the library is kind of an active no-man zone right now. It's, doesn't have much on either side. So kids, you know, have a lot of freedom in that area. And I wonder if somehow that shouldn't be bumped out so that it could be a little easier to see down in that direction. The, the front lobby, again, I like the, I like the design and I think it's great that we now can see into the front lobby. I wonder if there's some way that maybe we can, that workers can, when they see somebody lost out there, that they can communicate with them rather than just through a solid window. And the desk height, I thank you for addressing that, I think in a, in a very professional way. You, I think your design here with the, showing the, the sightlines, you know, illustrates your scientific approach to doing it. I think it's been a problem in the past and, and I think you've addressed it very well. I wonder in looking at the, the different renderings you have here, whether the monitors are maybe high enough to become a barrier and if maybe we couldn't recess them a little so that they're not giving that impression at least of separation from the, I don't know, I'm not going to say clients because then people say, oh, they're not clients, but whatever, we want to call our residents that come here to use the center. Another thing that I wondered is, from behind the desk, you know, we do have a lot of young people in through here and, and I think the recreation department's better able to address this and Eric's here tonight. But when the workers are behind the desk, they only have one way to get out and that's in the exact opposite direction from where there's probably the most activity and where a worker might be needed. And I just wonder if it might not, if you bumped that out a little bit more so you have more view down the hallway, if you couldn't also have an exit there that a worker could get out closer to the game room and to the, the teen, the hallway that leads back to the teen room. And I, again, I leave that to the recreation department, but it's just a personal opinion.
We actually explored that option. Problem was that pulling it out started to pinch down the width of the hallway going to the library. And it also, we ended up with two uses that were sort of counter to each other. You wanted to have a welcoming transaction counter. It just doesn't work very well with having a door right there.
No, and I guess I was, I was envisioning probably the welcoming counter going away that it was more of a, just a little barrier between, you know, for the exit, so. All right, the, again, I agree that the racks and the bulletin board would be great. I like Councilmember Clay's suggestions. I think maybe even some of the racks for literature on that wall that leads down towards the hall, the library, might be a good location for that. I don't think those things have to be central, again, as she said, but we do need to have the information better available than it is today. You know, it's, it not only doesn't look as well on the, on the countertop as it is today, it's not as functional. It's hard to keep it separated and everything. And then lastly, on the corian drape, is, I just wanted to know about the, it looks like there's airspace between the wood and the corian, which would be a maintenance, you know, keeping it clean issue?
It'll, it'll be blocked off.
Okay. And that's all closed. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
I thank you for all the hard work you've really put into this. I have a couple of different comments. I feel a little bit like we're, we're kind of fiddling around the edges and it would have been nice, I think, to actually have seen some of the potential possibilities. Like I'm sure you guys looked at, you know, probably started with like 10 and then you narrowed down to like two or three.
You've done a whole lot, right?
Yeah.
Possibilities. Yeah, so I think it would have been.
I appreciate that.
Helpful to sort of see some of those other options to think about. I generally do agree with Dan that we shouldn't be choosing, choosing art, but in this one I do have a little bit of knowledge having gone to the Harvard Graduate School of Design for a summer. And it seems like we're gaining, it's important that we gain a view down towards the back lot where a lot, a lot of the traffic comes in, but then we're kind of losing a lot of the other views into the other entrances, whereas now we currently have three really good views and we have one bad view. So I actually wonder if you might take the current desk and if you were facing, sitting at the desk, if you moved it to the right and changed the shape of the desk slightly. So basically, there would be a semi-circle that would come out into the hallway that goes back towards the, the parking lot. And someone, you know, that would be a real information kind of seat where the person would have a, you know, greater than 180 degree view, they could look down there, they could look down the library and they could look forward while still maintaining the view out to Grant Avenue. And I think, I, I really don't want to lose the double doors either. I think that the design does relate more effectively to the auditorium, but if you take the double doors away, then you have a really weird relation to the, this huge atrium, right? So you're in a huge atrium, you're going down to the, the little door, so. And I have the same question that Colleen has, that like how many passports are we doing a year? Is it 300, 600, 5000?
I don't know the number, but we're, we're pretty constantly busy during passport hours, which is during the daytime.
From 9:00 to 5:00 or?
Yeah, it's from 9:00 to 1:30.
So it would be, it would be good to have those numbers because it seems like, you know, choosing a lot, you know, designating a space and losing those double doors just for that. So I would, I would be more a fan of the other desk layout that I mentioned. If we're not going to do that, I would agree with Colleen that we should, we should have a smaller desk that doesn't have that passport area and keeps the double doors. I like the sort of concept of the corian, but I think it's one of those things that in reality, people are just going to put papers on top of the desks anyway. It's like, you know, on college campuses, you try and set up the paths and then people walk where they want to walk and it's just going to be ease of use. Not to mention the person sitting at the desk, when someone comes up and says, oh, where's that paper? They're kind of going to be looking over the desk trying to locate the paper. I just don't think it's going to function that well. And I also agree with Colleen that I don't think, I'd go for less controversial in a, in a public project, just because I don't think people are going to appreciate it. And then the other question I had is, are we locked into doing this? Like, how much does this cost as a part of the project? Like, this was something we said we might do in the future, right? We didn't definitely say we were going to do it when we did the auditorium. So I'm wondering like, how much does this cost and could we choose instead to put more photovoltaic on the roof instead of spending money to do this?
We had identified when we came forward with the auditorium project, up to $80,000 available for the lobby. And, but part of that is, we have to kind of see what, what this comes out to, to look like. So I, one of the things that I think, clearly we've heard some comments, architects are going to have to go back and, and think a little bit and then we can come back with some, you know, we'll have to come with the change order and recommendation for, for how to spend, how much money it would be and, and how to spend that.
Because you could do things like the acoustic panels and, you know, get the sound ending that wouldn't cost very much money and spend the money on increasing the size of the photovoltaic array on the, on the roof instead. And lastly, I'll just say, I hope that we have a performance of either Macbeth, Phantom of the Opera, Fiddler on the Lof, or Les Mis.
Well, we, we certainly could, they just don't have any changing rooms or anything like that, so. We're, we're the low-budget auditorium.
It's all about the acting.
It's, it's the, yeah.
Let me just ask a couple and then I'll find out anymore. I like the idea of the drape. I'm, I think I'm convinced that I don't actually like the drape. I think the, the arguments for racks should win out. I think even just having the drape, we would end up having to have racks anyway. And I, I think it's, it's a correct approach to just have it a little simpler that, you know, if it were a big perform, if it were Clarice Smith or something like that, I could see it. But City of Tacoma Park, I don't think so. I've got a question on the, on the acoustic panels at the back, no matter what goes on them, is, are they by nature something that you would never stick pushpins into or anything like that? Or is that a possibility in terms of the size of them? If they shrunk, you know, if like there were like plain panels on the end? I don't know, I'm not going any place in particular, but I'm just wondering about what you're locking yourself into with that.
Are you saying you would like to see the ability to make tack boards out of these?
Well, I didn't, I didn't know whether that was, I don't, I don't necessarily want to clutter it up, but I didn't know whether by doing this, you're saying, don't touch those.
Yes, that's correct. We are saying that, the idea is that not to have a surface that folks are approaching the desk and they see stuff stuck into these things.
I didn't necessarily want helter-skelter on the.
We've, we've had a lot of discussion about that and part of the design has a kind of backsplashy kind of thing to the, to the desk and the storage areas along the wall so that you've got space between where you're doing things and where the panels start.
So where the, where the tape was outside on the floor is a, is a desk area that's below those panels that would be usable for a lot of things.
That's right. And, and we've talked about, you know, not necessarily taking the acoustic panels all the way to the end of the wall because, for the same reason, that you don't want people just to actually come by with a pen and jab it or something.
Right, right. On the, on the question about the extent of the desk out into the hallway to see down toward the library, one thing I thought about was whether it was possible to change the shape of that curve at the outside corner there where it, the only place on the plan where it shows the curve and kind of bump out a little bit more there to be able to see at that point and then it kind of tucks back in more rather than the right angle so that you're not, you're not constraining the hall because you've, you've got a place for it as you go down into the bigger area there and whether that might deal with the view issue. One thought I had about, I kind of, I'm not particularly bothered by losing the double doors because we have to remember that we, we're creating the back entrance to the auditorium so that I think for people who are going to use the atrium and the front entrance, it's conceivable and probable that a number of them might use the back entrance to go to the auditorium rather than everybody coming out the doors where they have to come out now. It also, I think the capacity is only about, what, 170, something like that? So that, yeah, 160 something. So that we're not really, it's not really that big a crowd. The problem I see is that with the one entrance or exit, in this case, thinking about it, the exit from the desk, people exiting, staff exiting from the desk would be coming out into that stream of people potentially exiting through those double doors. And I wonder if that's a conflict that is a problem with, with this particular design.
Thanks.
That's a good point. Question is, is there actually a stream of folks coming through that door or is it occasional?
Well, it's curious. I mean, there are people. Certainly we, you know, it depends on what time of day and what gets out, but there's certainly people that go through there.
But I guess I could see in a, in a worst-case scenario of there's a reason that people are exiting quickly, you know, fire, something like that. And, and they're all saying, I'm, I'm going to get out of here and a bunch of people are pushing through there and the staff wants to get in there to find out what's going on and help, they can't get out into the stream, they have no alternative.
No doubt. You've got, you've got potential, you've got converging paths there. It's, it's a little tricky with the lobby in general though, because any place where you would exit this at the perimeter or at the end of the desk is going to be at a point where you're converging with a path. If you were to put any exit in the middle of that run of desk, it's usually less desirable to just stick the door right in the middle of the desk.
Right.
And so we try and put it away at the sides, but the two sides are right where we have pathways.
So it's, it's good for us to look at that again.
I wonder whether, I wonder whether, I'm thinking out loud here, I wonder whether the, that entrance, yeah, it's got downsides too. I was thinking about using one of the double doors as. I was thinking about using one of the double doors as the, a way for staff.
To get out of there.
To get out. And, and I like, I like the idea of having the, the window to the atrium. I would like it better if it were a point for interface rather than just looking through and people, because if nobody is...
We also have, we also have the fire separation requirements.
Ah, right, right. The atrium, the atrium is the problem.
We have a very interesting list of constraints with the project.
Right. So to communicate with you, semaphores.
So, so I guess...
A friendly smile.
It's reading, it has to be reading.
To, to sum up where I am, I, in general, I like the design. I'm not in favor of the drape. I'm fine with the double doors, but I think some of the entrance and egress for staff needs to be thought about a little bit more, and I think there could be a pushout of that curve to get the bump for the view toward the library. Any comments from people who haven't commented? Councilmember Victoria.
I am deeply relieved that the seven of us are not married and talking to the architect about a design that's been brought to us. I am fine with the Corian as a design element, but it's not going to win anyway, so let's just get past that. And I do, I'm dubious about having the documents on the front. I think there might be adequate view down that library hallway, but my impression when I'm here is that that hallway gets the least use, and it sounds like there's more use down there.
It doesn't get very much use.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't get the feeling there's a lot of use, and if you're sitting there looking at View 3 on the first page, if you were sitting facing the entrance, because everybody does come in through the back of our building largely, you would be able to turn your head and look down there. Now, at the same time, Councilmember Robinson was doing some very interesting doodles on how to bump out without blocking the, the hallway adequately.
Share it with you.
I'm uncommitted on the doors. I have not, I don't see a stream of people through here, but obviously, you're going to be puzzling that more. And I have no hesitance, since I haven't said I won't pick art, in saying that I strongly prefer Sligo Boys or something similar to it because of the natural element and the historical element. I think that would be well-served, and I like, in particular, this picture, how it's just the rocks and stream on one view, and then you get the surprise of the boys, but that's enough artistic comment. But I would really be looking for something historical and environmental there, I think that's. Arrest, this is our public space, this is the greeting space, so, you know.
And, and I'll just piggyback on that and say, I hate the idea of just these areas, it seems like that sucks the life out of it. Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Snapper.
Oh, I'm done. You're done. This is good. Okay, well, I'll speak up. I really, the more I think about this, I really strongly think we need a second entrance or exit to the desk. I don't really see how, you know, with the number of kids and so on that come in and out and go up and down that hall and in and out of the game room, that, I mean, you're going to have staff hurdling over the top of that thing, I think. I mean, I don't know what, how the rec department feels, but I, I just, my own experience doing this kind of stuff many years ago was, you need a, you need quick, you need quick egress there. And you can design them so that they don't, you know, have the swinging door thing like we have over here, which is, I mean, it is an entrance, but it doesn't provide any other function. It would be, I believe, possible to design something that would be relatively light, that people could open and still be a functional surface, because I do think you need a surface. I, I kind of like keeping the, the double doors also, now that Colleen has raised it, because it does visually, I think it creates a nice entranceway there. I'd sure like to find a way to, to keep that, to keep the double doors there. I realize that they have to be doors, so there's a symmetry aspect to having glass and then a door. And, you know, if we had performances in there, you'd have a fair number of people trying to go in and out, and I think a lot of people would be going through there. Dan, Dan and I were doodling about how to bump out the desk a little bit, but I should leave that to the architects. The idea of bumping it towards the, you know, so-called back entrance, either curved or not curved, as the case may be, might, might be a useful way to, way to do it also, because that would give you the better sightline. You don't have to have it go very far, just a little better sightline down that.
Councilmember Snapper, do you have another comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question about the panels behind the desk. Are they terribly expensive, as something that maybe artists could periodically trade out?
We, we picked the only system we could find that was actually field-manipulable, and that you can actually take the fabric out and replace it. We did that primarily because we do think that, try as we might to keep it in places that it is protected, it's still likely to take some abuse, and the, the fabric itself is fairly inexpensive. The task of replacing the fabric requires a special contractor, but, you know, it's a...
They're just saying that with so many local artists, it would be another displaced opportunity, and, but yet...
Might be a slower change, even, with that.
It'd be more of a long-term, maybe.
Yeah, but something that would be not costly, but...
No, and technically, not very difficult.
And I'll bet artists in Tacoma Park could figure out how to do it in their homes.
Sounds great.
Would, would it be helpful for the architects to have a clear sense of the council about the, the double doors? Because my sense is that if, if there were a real sense of the council to say, "No, we want all four doors to the atrium," that really changes your design parameters.
Yeah, I wanted to just, just...
So, so we need to give you that sense clearly before we finish.
Perhaps, but, but, you know, one of the things that I have thought about is that there may be, maybe there's a way to do three doors, or to do some other kind of thing that's, that's a little different, too. So I, I would like to kind of throw this back in the architect's shop with the comments. I mean, clearly, we've heard a lot of good ideas and strong comments, and I think, you know, that's, I mean, it needs to be digested and played around with a little bit.
You know, maybe three doors, but then convert it to two larger doors, or, you know, the space of three doors converted to, I don't know. I don't know how structural that middle thing is.
Yeah, and, and that's the big question about what's there, I'm not sure.
I think it's fairly structural. Councilmember Clay.
The doors that are there now don't have a handicap.
And that's, that is something that we will definitely include. It's been, it's been high on my list to get fixed, but since I knew we were dealing with this, we...
Well, one of the things I was thinking about was, was, yeah, that you could do three doors, and your third door could be a door that slides open. I don't know if you can have a slide-open door for a fire door.
Um, I think we have all kinds of weird restrictions on that, but we'll look and, and see what options there are.
Because it would be nice to have, I wish some of the doors that we had were, were auto doors that opened anyway, because I think what happens is the kids go through, even my kid, my seven-year-old, because she says, "Well, they told me to do that so that you didn't have to touch all the doors," and well, you're still touching the handicap thing, but, you know, it wears down the door mechanism. But anyway, that would be, that would be better.
So if I can try and present something that gives you some direction on doors, but gives some flexibility, because I've heard different opinions, it sounds to me like if we said, gee, is it possible to do three doors, have the fourth door, the, you know, whatever it is for view as part of the desk? My sense is that if it's that, the, I don't know whether that changes the need for a second entrance to the desk, whether it affects it in any way in terms of exiting out into that path. Would it, would it be sufficient for the council to say, a little more flexibility on more than two doors, and that would give you direction you need to go? Or do we want to say, you know, two doors versus four doors? I'm trying to flex that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think we have enough choices, just go with either two or four. I mean, I don't see, we, with the current configuration, the four doors have been needed sometimes with, when we have events here, but with the new configuration, with the council chambers, or the auditorium, we call it now, opening at the front of the building also, having access in that direction, it seems that the, the two doors would be adequate. So I would support the two-door option.
Councilmember Ray.
I just make a follow-up comment on the two or four doors to start with, is, it's not only about events in the auditorium, I can think about, usually, a couple times a year, we actually have big events in the community center, so like, at the end of the road race, there was a ton of people in there. I'm trying to remember the other, there was an event with pizza, some big pizza, where there, there was food, and it was part of Arts and Humanities Day, or something like that, where that is actually the space that gets used, the, the atrium and that, and the space in front of the desk. And I think you're going to have a real problem if you just have the two doors there. I know it doesn't happen that often throughout here, but it is a, usually a space. My second question, it has to do with whether those doors could be fire doors and actually be glass, because one of the problems is people come into the atrium and they don't know where to go. If they could see through the glass doors and see that there's people back there and activity, and that's kind of a central location, I don't know.
Well, we'll look at that again. I mean, the, the issue before had been cost, and I have to double-check that, but that was, that was certainly not wished for much by a lot of us.
And then, I had a question about, if you left the desk where it is now, how, what is the distance really between, because one of the things we worry about, right, is the entrance on Grand Avenue.
It's about six feet. It's, it's about six feet from the corner of the new wall to the desk, which is, yeah, which is quite narrow.
Is that your understanding as well?
Which dimension are we referring to?
If you're coming in Grand Avenue, if you left the desk where you, where, and the edge of the desk and the kind of corner of the handicap.
I think it may be four, four foot six.
And then lastly, I was just curious, you know, Eric has heard a lot of conversation here, and he supervises the staff, he actually manages the desk, so I didn't know if he had anything that he wanted to add, or, I don't know, to the table.
You know, I just, I'm happy to hear everybody's comments tonight, and I think this is something that, you know, I think the rec department would like to talk about, as well as everybody else having chase forward complaints, and they didn't talk about it for a bit.
And, and what's the timing of when we need to...
Well, we're going to try and do this as quickly as possible. I think, you know, frankly, we'll do what time it takes. I mean, I, you know, sometimes it has monetary consequences, but we don't know exactly what that point is yet.
But in general, the longer we take, the more potential for increased cost.
Yes. Well, or, or we may not be able to get it through this contract.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
Just want to remind you that the disabled parking spaces, there's two out the back door.
Right.
And entrance for a person in a wheelchair or that is, has difficulty on uneven surfaces is pretty bad through the back parking lot, which leaves you, I think there's two spaces out the door on Grant Avenue, is that right?
Yeah, we try to have them at all of the entrances. We have, we have handicap spaces.
There is a full through there, I mean, you could conceivably drop somebody off and then go off and park, but then the other two are also out in the, in the moat and down below, and that's where the elevator entrance is, too, to, to go back and forth in there, and it has a pretty easy drop-off for people. So I think there's a possibility, too, that we'll have people coming up that way, and, and then coming back through the double doors to get to your accessible entrance also, is another thing, kind of about, thinking about how people are going to get back and forth through these doorways, and even if they did come through these back two doorways and we have receptions in the, in the front atrium way, we need to have this, this doorway setup be really accessible for those folks.
Sure.
We were referring to the set of double doors into the atrium.
Yeah.
And, and it sounds like, are you recommending that we go ahead and put those on an automatic opener?
Well, we, we were going to do that, no matter what.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's important to do that. It's not just for handicap folks, we got people trying to go to the art room with their hands full, the whole bit, so.
Yeah, I would love it, instead of even having to punch it with your hip or whatever they just put them.
Right.
Or I think have that, that would super much.
And anything would be better than the two doors currently being looked at in this design to become windows, since they haven't worked for a long, long time. They don't close, and they're not fixable.
I think we got lots of input. I'd like to, I'm sorry.
I want to, I want to, I want to get the, kind of a show of hands, just to make sure that everybody's clear on two doors, four doors, flexibility for three, just so we get a sense, because I've heard various comments, but I think it might be helpful, so. Show of hands for people who say it must be four doors. Show of hands for people who say it would really be preferable to be four doors. Show of hands for people who say, "I think we can get by with two." And the other, okay, okay. It sounds like two.
Okay.
Does that give you what you need?
And the Corian drapes went away.
Corian drape goes away? All, show of hands on that one?
C4. Okay. Sorry. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Anything else you need?
Passports, do you want to?
I'm sorry?
Do we want to get any more direction on passports?
No, we'll need to work on the functional now.
Yeah, okay.
And I have the next item, so I have to try and talk with you tomorrow.
So, on that last whole conversation, we'll get more information from you on passport stuff.
Yeah, we have to figure that, that's a, that's a bit of a discussion.
Okay. Thanks. So we're sending the architects away with the doodles.
Want to see our designs with speed bumps?
Oh, you don't want to go there.
In the hallway? I think we'll work with you.
See you in the design. Thank you so much.
Sure, sure. We'll catch up a few.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our final item for the evening is a briefing on the 2010 census.
Well, and hopefully, I have a voice left.
And if I can just say, Councilmember Snapper and I were at an event yesterday with, kind of, Councilmember Valerie Irving, and we had a discussion at the end of it about how important it's going to be for the, for us to have an accurate census count. I think there was general agreement that a lot of people feel like, there were a lot of people who weren't counted in the 2000 census, census in this area in particular, and there are various pressures from more recent events that I think make people less likely to want to step forward and be counted, so I think we're trying to make sure that we move in one direction while we have some countervailing forces that might make it even harder to do what we want to do, and Suzanne is going to talk to us about what efforts we need to think about going forward.
Yes, a good census count is incredibly important for us as a city government. We get electoral representation decided by census counts in districts, we get money, and we get it for federal needs. Money comes for people who often don't fill out their census form, and these are the key people that, that really do need to be counted in order to get services in terms of social services, enough hospitals, enough schools, enough social service programs, health programs, that kind of thing. People are very nervous about filling out census forms. One of the things that is a real problem, especially when the economy is bad, is you have people kind of living with their relatives, and, you know, there's situations where there's a person's house, and they fill out the census form, but the sister and, and her family that are staying in the basement don't get counted, and we have to make sure that everybody is counted, and that everybody recognizes how important it is and how confidential the information is. The information, if you've got doubling up in your house, it does not get turned over to us or to any housing authority or the, the fire inspector or anybody else. And it, it's important, it benefits us in terms of money, and in terms of giving us a sense of who our community is. One of the things that people really want to know is, you know, who lives in Tacoma Park? know, who lives in Tacoma Park, who lives in this neighborhood, and if you don't have adequate census information, you don't know, and, and you don't have a good sense of what services you need to provide to the people who live there. One of the pieces of information I included in your package is this map, this is from the 2000 census, these are the census return rates, and the darker blue colors are high levels of return of census forms, the red and yellow colors are areas where there was very poor return, and if you'll notice, Tacoma Park's almost the worst in Montgomery County. And what this means is that about two-thirds of our population in many of our areas of town did not return, only two-thirds returned the census forms, and a full third or more did not.
Oh, it goes down to, it goes down, it's fifty, the?
Oh, I know, it's, it's some.
Fifty-one to sixty.
Exactly, in some places, it's, it's really quite bad.
That's the reddish colored one.
And, you know, and you're a ward. So it really is very important that the people in our community get counted. The best way to encourage people to fill out their census form is for what's considered a trusted ambassador to tell them that this is important, and it means somebody from their community, from their church, from their neighborhood, somebody that they feel is a straight shooter, that will tell them that this is a good thing to do, and it's safe, and, and generally, what's very useful is for those people to be identified, so that we can give them information, we can work with them, they can take their ideas about how to have a neighborhood party, how to whatever, that while people fill out their census forms, or to celebrate that they've done it, but whatever their ideas are is the best way to connect, we get to hear it, we get to support it. The normal format for that is to, is to create a complete count committee, and there's complete count committees at the state level, Montgomery County is forming one, they would like to have some really key people from Tacoma Park involved in that, because we're such an important concept, part of the, the to-be-counted area of Montgomery County. They are forming these groups now, they're ready to help pay for some of the activities, but we haven't put forward any names, or very few names. Some people have kind of self-selected themselves from certain groups that have been approached separately, but as a city, as a city of Tacoma Park, we don't have a complete count committee yet, and we don't have a big event that says it's a kickoff, we don't have a structure about how we advertise for the census. And so one of the things that I'd really like to get from you are names of people that you know of that would be the trusted ambassadors, whether they participate formally in a complete count committee, or we just help them with whatever they wanna do on their own, I'd like to have those names. Also, I wanted to, I should put in here some information about the Montgomery County kickoff of the census event is October 21st in Rockville, and I think, you know, we should have a Tacoma Park kickoff in Tacoma Park, and we should pick a date and, and work towards having some kind of a celebration of the importance of the census, how, and how this is a chance for Tacoma Park to shine and be proud of Tacoma Park. Those are my ideas on that, but it really needs to come from a group of people who are out there to help promote it, and so I'd like to hear from you about either people that you think should participate, or your ideas for having an event or a strategy about promoting the census.
Councilmember Snipper?
Somehow I get my hand up first, I think. Does the city, is the city planning an actual structure to?
It's up to you. Certainly, we are being encouraged to form a complete count committee, Census Bureau likes to have these, and then they put them on their website as ways so people can get contacted, and that kind of thing.
Well, I, you know, of course, I think the majority of the people who didn't fill out the form are not going to be going to the website and checking out who.
No, unless they want jobs, which by the way, is one of the few places you can get a job right now, is to sign up with the Census Bureau. So that's, that's one thing that we are, you know, if, as long as you're a citizen of the United States, the, there are jobs available with the Census Bureau.
Can, can we use our organizers to do some of this work?
I think that's, that may be.
Because I think it's really, Valerie was quite, quite emphatic about this, and it's really pretty essential for Tacoma Park to do much better than the last time.
Right. We didn't do much last time, and I think, again, part of it is just making sure that we really have identified some people that can sit down and think of a few strategies that make sense for their group.
I think what we mostly did was second-guess the numbers, because they appeared so out of whack in some areas.
Well, and frankly, the Census Bureau in, in the previous year had the long boundary for us, and so we did get some of that fixed.
Councilmember Clay?
A couple of thoughts. One of them is, is, well, first, I have a question, do we know who, who the folks are that aren't filling out the forms?
Well, the traditional groups that don't fill out forms are immigrants, people who are doubling up in housing, and often, young men, up to like nineteen to twenty-four, they don't really, they're kind of hanging out at their girlfriend's house for a couple weeks, and they go move back to their mom, and whatever, and they don't really identify as having a, a location, and they tend not to count.
And the idea is that the census is supposed to be, where are you living on April? Doesn't matter if you move around, where are you on April 1st?
And we have to count homeless as well, and we've identified places where homeless people, we've submitted information already to the Census Bureau for their special homeless count, of where people do live in Tacoma Park.
So I think intelligence on immigrant communities and accessing them, the school PTAs in Tacoma Park usually have Spanish-speaking liaisons, put, put things out in Spanish, and I don't know if they do it in the, some of the African languages also, but that would be one thought. And the other thought is that all those immigrant folks, I think in large part are, are shopping at the numerous businesses that we have on the periphery of Tacoma Park that cater to their different cultural foods and, and services, and so if we could get the business owners to partner with us, and actually get them to talk to people as they come in, especially as, you know, hey, you know, make sure you fill out your census form, so we get credit for you, and no one's gonna.
Right, and, and those folks can often be considered the trusted ambassadors, that's the kind of people that we need to identify.
Well, I think we have a lot of those folks in Tacoma Park, so we could find a way to get them together and, and give them all the information.
One of the other things that maybe some of you have some connections to, is many of the different immigrant communities have websites, either for their country, or for their hometown, and they post their baby pictures on it, and whatever. One of the things that would be very useful is to actually get somebody who posts on those websites to identify that as doing the census as an important thing. That, it's amazing to me how many people who are immigrants connect via the internet with their hometown or their home country, and that's something that I, I don't personally have a lot of access to, I've seen a couple of them, but it's something that as we find out, you know, that may be a method, there may be other methods, that are particularly good ways to reach particular populations.
Councilmember Wright?
Councilmember Victoria? Do you think there's hundreds of thousands, or millions of dollars in stake in the city associated with this per year?
I haven't, I know, I haven't calculated, Montgomery County has calculated a certain amount that they feel that they didn't get, you know, each year, for the ten years from the 2000 census, because of the undercount. We've not calculated that yet for Tacoma Park, I'm not sure that we know how to do that.
Okay. Well, just assume that it's not insignificant, right? It's at least a couple hundred thousand dollars.
It's certainly significant.
So it seems like it should be a priority. My approach would be that we should have a committee. I would like to see at a more granular level than this map for Tacoma Park, so.
Yes, and we can, we can get more.
Because I really think it's, it's sort of like an election campaign, right? Like, you need to know which blocks, really, do we, have we had low returns on, and identify the person who's like, the block captain for that block, and then make sure they're on the committee, and the committee meets regularly, and people are driving towards that. I think we have to have someone on the city staff who clearly owns this, right? So that's the person who is gonna have sleepless nights from now until whenever the census is over, making sure that we get it right. We need to have a clear measurement, right? So I don't quite know that it's a thermometer, but if there's some count of like, how many households have filled out the, the, the survey, if that's the way you determine whether you're doing a good job or not, like, we should publicly make that very clear, whether it's that we check in on it every two weeks in the council meeting, or we have an actual thermometer on the wall, and that.
Yeah, one of the, I mean, there are some interesting suggestions for that, and that can come from, from these folks, but like, for example, just like a thermometer, sometimes on, on April 1st, there can be a, you have a party, and everybody brings their form and puts it in the mailbox, and they get a, you know, an ice cream cone or something, but it's something that really, you know, helps us encourage and make it, make it a community effort.
Do we get a feedback from the census about how well we're doing?
We do get, we do get feedback, because then they have to identify the census takers that actually go door-to-door to the people that didn't respond.
Okay. And then lastly, have we talked to CASA specifically? Because I'm pretty sure that they probably have.
Yes, there's been lots of, I haven't personally talked on this topic, but I believe they're already a part of the county's complete count committee.
So I think the city should talk directly to CASA and figure out what, how we can partner with them, what the strategy is. Because they have an increasing number of organizers that are going door-to-door to talk to people about it.
And just before going to Councilmember Victoria, I'll make the observation that, yeah, it would be wonderful to have a party where everybody comes and puts their forms in the mailbox, if there were any mailboxes left. Councilmember Victoria?
I have several suggestions, I'm just thinking of my ward, and the people least likely to be counted. One, you know, we, we should look at a faith committee, Zion Lutheran in particular gets a lot of the tenacity tenants, and African immigrants right across the streets, we should be talking to ministers like them, whereas like Bright, Bright Lights Baptist, a large number of their congregants are from out of the city, you know, they drive here. I would say, starting with whoever is the lead of any tenant associations we have, to start communicating with them, and particularly thinking about tenacity early on, because I don't know what the timeline is for people to move back into the towers, you know, if they're in place in temporary housing in Prince George's, that's where they get counted, we're gonna get ripped off on that. But, but there are two tenant association people there, and working with any tenant leaders we have. I mean, it looks like it's Ward Five, and there we have a lot of small units that are four to eight units, and they don't have necessarily a tenant association, so those are gonna be more, we may need, and I have maybe two blocks of those, so, I mean, there has to be a different strategy for that, I suppose. In my area, I would recommend, they don't call it C-Safe anymore, you know, they've slashed and burned, but Mary Kendall and Gretchen still survive, they're both bilingual, and they spend a lot of time talking to people about public safety, things like that. I will also find a contact for Rolling Terrace is, we have a, a committee, Padres de Latinos en Acción, and that would help somewhat with the Ward Five issues, because the way to get to people is through the schools, it's the institution they have the most contact with, and the least fear about presumably, and if you're gonna do, you know, ice cream cones, you have to tell the children to get the ice cream cones. And that's about it. I don't know if anybody's ever looked at, I hate to say this, because like, you know, I was, I might have been in here with a complaint next week, but as far as illegal housing and over-occupancy, perhaps, you know, stoves, things people worry about in the basement, I don't know if they back off on enforcing that somewhat, or, or wait a little bit during the census period. You know, obviously, clear public safety and health hazards have to be looked at, but, you know, we don't wanna be hammering people over the head at the same time we're trying to get them to admit that there's ten people in the house. And that for the immediate neighborhoods where, I mean, my neighborhood's over half rental homes, some of them have a lot of people, some of them probably have family members moving in right now. That's all I can think of.
Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've described this, and as we've heard all the suggestions, it's an enormous task, and it's gonna require a great deal of time, and yet, it has a significant fiscal benefit to the city to accomplish it, and it seems to me that it would make sense for us to consider contracting with an organization. And I guess I should disclose that I'm a graduate of the Community Empowerment Program with Impact Silver Spring, but they're certainly well-connected with the schools, the local schools, they're well-connected with tenants in the area. They, I think the, the mission of the organization fits well with this, so I would think that, that they would at least be one bidder for a procurement like this, and I think it makes sense for us to do it, given we can't do a good job without more resources, and the benefit to us is significant. So that's my suggestion.
Councilmember Robinson?
I support using an organizer, if we have them on staff, and they'd be willing to do that. As far as which department of ours is the, has the most potential, I think the one that's been the most successful is the New Ave group, and thinking about the person who should lose the most sleep, and was that Josh, was that you talking about? I think Alana would be great to lose the most.
I'm not telling her.
Because she did such a good job on the New Ave. I support having strategic partnership of some sort with CASA, if we can pull that off. I looked through the 50 Ways Census Data Are Used list, or appendix here, called 50 Ways, and I tried to think, Councilmember Victoria and I tried to think, which ones of these make sense to the person on the street, and I'll, so we sort of doodled on the sheet, I'll give it to you for what it's worth.
Master doodler.
Master doodling on this end of the table tonight. But, you know, the, the three messages that have to go to people who we want to share that information is that their information is not shared with the bad government, but it's, and it's safe to tell, so the same, kind of two sides of the same coin, and then somehow that it's good for them. Keep it simple.
Well, and that's, you know, and it, it really is hard to, to convince people sometimes, but there's some, there's some fascinating stories. In, in Montgomery County, 10 years ago, when they were preparing for the 2000, they got the list of the different, you know, we prepare a list of addresses, and it's kept confidential and it's kept separate from our code enforcement, of, of where, you know, sometimes we know that there's two units, or we suspect there's two units in a one-unit house. That information is given to the Census Bureau, so they have a good list. They share information with us in that way, but what happened was, 10 years ago, the, the fire marshal really wanted to get that list, because he was very concerned about the safety of some of the people living, doubling up in homes, and, and, and it was absolutely not. You can't get it, no matter how good of a reason it is for them, it is illegal to provide that information and share that information from other, for other governmental agencies.
Okay, and I had one final question, which is, I think I understand that for those residences that do not turn back the questionnaire, the Census Bureau sends out individuals to each and every of those, every one of those homes?
Multiple times until they get the forms.
I see, so this, all of our efforts here are to help reduce the staffing costs of the federal government census.
Right, I mean, they're never, they're never perfect, and I think it's after the third or fourth time, they sometimes have to make a guess at what they.
I see, okay, that's, that's a clarification.
But the important thing, the better that, the better information is for people to submit the information.
Right.
By mail, at April 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to identify an event, or did you want to have a way where you get these names to me, so that we can? these names to me so that we can...
I think if you give me the granular, you know, closer data, I can tell you, so I can tell you somewhere on certain streets, but...
But Josh...
So you wanted, you wanted more detailed information by...
A lot of the streets in my ward are not going to be the...
That's right.
But there are some, if you look at the...
But isn't, isn't it census data? So who would have the granular data?
Well, we can get from, from, the Census Bureau does have some...
They have it on a block by block?
I will find out what they, how detailed it gets.
They have it at least at the sub-census tract. They might, that's pretty easy.
Okay. Good to know.
And so timeframe for you getting us more information there for us getting suggestions back to you?
Well, please don't necessarily wait for me. I mean, one of the things, identifying faith groups, identifying organizations like CASA, identifying, you know, ways to...
Well, we all have...
People that's some trusted business people. These are, these are folks you don't need to wait for the, the more detailed information. I'll work as fast as I can to get the information.
Yeah, no, I just like the press between Church on the corner of Tulip and Carroll is, you know, having members who live in all over Tacoma Park and are also very active churches. They might be interested in having this be something they really engage in.
The, the, Montgomery County is having a training for people who might be part of complete count committees this Wednesday. So, you know, only some folks are going to be able to make that, but I do want to try to expedite this as much as possible.
So if we can try and get any suggestions to Suzanne this week?
Please do.
That would be helpful.
With the party.
That's what, that's what, you know, the, the folks who are, are, I mean, the idea of the complete count committee is the people who really know their community identifies what's most successful in their community. And it may not be a party, but it might be. So that's part of getting the people together and also identifying the best media to get to reach people. You know, we're already putting a little census box in our newsletter, but there may be a local, a different way, you know, a Facebook page, a, a local neighborhood. Let's serve a, you know, some, a particular Hispanic newspaper that's better than another. That's the information that we need to hear from people who think it'll connect the best.
Or the mayor of that town in Guatemala who came and said, I got 10,000 people here.
Well, and, and that's an example of a place. Apala has a, a website, and they exchange, they have this fairly, you know, this fairly substantial website, but they share information among all their residents or former residents. It'd be a great place to put some information about the census.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.